Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for September 12, 2023. Please stand for our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Today I request a moment of silence. Yesterday was 9/11. May we never forget what happened on 9/11 a few years back, but let us also keep in mind our first responders and those people who were out there protecting us, protecting us on the front lines every day. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Carlton.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Doster. Getty.
Here.
Hatfield.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Smoker.
Here.
Tunisin.
Here.
Thank you. Approval of written agenda at this time, any member of the board or public may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Yes, sir.
Could you please move full C and E? C and E.
Items C and items E will be moved from the consent agenda under items for consideration. Does any Commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as amended. Reports from state and county officers. Do we have any state and county officers who wish to deliver an update to the board?
Good morning. Mr. San?
Yes, sir.
Mr. San?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good morning. Berry County law enforcement logged 732 complaints in the month of August. Thirty-two individuals were arrested. There were 59 accidents handled. Twenty-five involved deer. One involved alcohol or drugs. Can you hear me okay? Rick? Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you. Three hundred and seventy-two criminal histories were run for warrant entry or warrant requests. Eighty-six sex offenders were processed. Two hundred and eight pistol licenses were processed. During the five-year comparison, 2023, 732 complaints. 2018, there's 872. Accidents handled fifty-nine to fifty-seven. Car deer accidents, twenty-five to nineteen in 2018. Arrests are eighteen in 2018. There's eighty-seven. Alcohol and drug-related arrests, three, and in 2018, there was eleven. For corrections, booked in 102 persons into the jail for the month of August, released 108 back into the community. The daily average inmate population was 50. Staff transported 39 inmates to and from various locations to include court, medical facilities, and other counties. In addition, we fingerprinted 128 persons at the front counter. Kitchen staff prepared 4,620 meals for inmate population at the cost of $2.63 a meal. Bookings, 101 in 2023 and 2018 was 343. Releases, 102 compared to 264. Daily average population, 50 in 99 in 2018. Transports, 36 compared to 62 in 2018. Public fingerprints, 128. 2018, 114. Meals served, 4,620 compared to 2018, 9,014 at $1.55 apiece. Didn't have any plumbing repairs this year. HVAC repairs is $489.92. Security repair is $1,482. Anything else? That's all I have for you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Was it my understanding that you figured out some way to cooperate or participate in the crisis intervention?
The CIT?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we've been on board. It's just a matter of getting the policies all fit to Berry County. So, yeah, we're on board to that.
Okay.
Quite a downturn in arrests from 87 to 18.
Yeah.
Are we a kinder, gentler population at this point, or what's going on?
The law has changed. We're not arresting for, like, there is one law that just drove me crazy. It wasn't even a law. It was a, the Secretary of State had a, I forgot what it was called. If you had a driver while suspended license, you had to pay reinstatement fees in order to get your driver's license back. So they got rid of that reinstatement fee. So we're not arresting people for stuff like that anymore. And, I mean, just little things like that. The friend of the court is working differently than what they did back in five years ago. So that's made a huge, huge impact on jail population and the amount of arrests we get. It also affects us when we used to have all these inmates, most of them were friend of the court inmates that we used for, like, Charlton Park and then Animal Shelter. We don't have those anymore. But half the, half the inmates, yeah, we'll take that.
Exactly. Okay. Additional questions for the sheriff? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Additional state or county officers at this time?
I have no updates.
Okay, thank you.
We just went back to session last week, so.
All right. Thank you for coming. Limited public comment. At this time, any member, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Rick Moore, Still Harbor Master of the Potunk Lake Yacht Club. I wish to remind members and guests to speak into the microphone or use your outdoor voice. Also, speak slowly and distinctly so we can hear all your valuable information that you are imparting on us. Also, I would like to say that the board members tend to, tend to whisper amongst each other towards the end of the meetings and speak about two foot away from your microphone. So please, we're curious about what else you're speaking at the end of the meeting as well, as this meeting is very important to me because I've been coming here for many years now and have my own seat in the audience almost. And I wish to know what's going on as well as the folks on this side of the room. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. And I want to thank you for your devoted interest in the, in the welfare of Berry County because I know that politics is really messy right now, but it's very important to save democracy by doing the right thing at the right time and apologize for it later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Additional public comment?
I'm gonna pray for you. I'm praying for you. Hi, I'm Karen Strayer, Orangeville precinct, Orangeville precinct delegate. So I just want to invite the Lord in to this space. So Father God, we come before you humbly inviting you into this space. There is a remnant of, of people who recognize that we are constitutional republic, not a democracy. And the difference is that a democracy allows, as you know, allows the leaders to tell us what to do when constitutional republic makes the people the authorities and the leaders serve us. So Lord, we are inviting you back into Berry County, into Michigan, and into this room. We just renounce anything that of earth, air, fire, water, the netherworld, anything that would be coming against your will, Lord, no matter who's, which side of the room we sit on. Lord, you recognize who your people are. So you are, we recognize that you are a God of, not a God of scarcity or bondage, but of abundance and increase. Lord, you have planned in advance the things you have for us to do. So lift up more workers for your harvest and remind those who are serving on this and every committee of the oath they've taken to uphold the Constitution and that they are working for the people for life and liberty and actual, the original word was property. So Lord, you have called for unity. Jesus said, be in unity, in your will. So we who love you stand in unity and lock shields to accomplish your strategy and your will. So Lord, would you please restore the years the locusts have eaten? We trust in you and not in man and ask you to change hearts and minds and move pens to do your will. And we pray all of this in your mighty name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Bass, Carlton Township. There's been a couple of events in the last month or so here at the meetings that really concern, that concern me broadly. Number one, there appears to be some commissioners that want to impede public participation in these meetings. I have concern about that. The right to criticize the government is a bedrock principle of the First Amendment law for over 200 years. Americans have understood the unique danger posed by public officers who attempt to regulate public sentiment. A constitutional republic requires citizens to pointedly critique government officials to test the soundness of their policies and the mettle of their leadership. That is why political speech specifically lays at the heart of the First Amendment, whose protection is added zenith, as the Supreme Court ruled in Meyer versus Grant, 1988. The First Amendment absolutely unequivocally, excuse my speech, defensive court political speech is so axononic or self-evident that government actors' fatal attempts to regulate the speech based on its content shocks the conscience. That is what happens in these points. Public officials must have thick skin when encountering inevitable criticism. In New York Times versus Sullivan, 1964, the Supreme Court explained that vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasant sharp personal attacks come with occupying a government office. Sharp and personal critiques are not unpleasant side effects of a constitutional republic. They're prerequisites. Democratic governance, governance depends on the free exchange of thoughts, including public denunciation of individual office holders. As the court made clear in Sullivan, preserving the marketplace of ideas requires society to uphold its national commitment to the principle of debate on public issues and should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. A county commission invites public comment for a reason, to hear the public's feedback. In Michigan, public comment periods are classified as limited public forums. Unlike a traditional public forum, a limited public forum allows the government to regulate certain features of speech, including content. If the restrictions are viewpoint neutral and reasonable considering the forum's response, the government may example, may, for example, require that the public comments are derationally limited, topically relevant, and profanity-free. As long as the restrictions are reasonable, they pass the constitutional muster. But if the First Amendment protects anything, it protects the people's right to criticize their elected officials during a public comment period of a pub, of a city council or county commissioners meeting. Members of the public have both a constitutional right and a civic duty to debate and discuss how their government is performing. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Ted DeVries, Prairieville Township. I even have notes. Wow, what a banner week. COA, elections, audits. The only thing missing was lake level issues. Just a reminder, back on May 16th, Drain Commissioner Dahl brought a resolution in front of the board asking for the pledging of full faith and credit for the county for the 150,000 towards the Eagle permit. Once again, that Eagle permit was asking that Pine Lake be reduced to 890.5, which is the legal lake limit, which currently is about two and a half feet below where it currently is right now. And it's low. So to have it reduced another two feet would not be very good. Anyway, then after that, on June 27th, you went into closed session to discuss Pine Lake. And since then, I've had conversations with Commissioner Dahl and have heard no additional updates on where things stand with, with Pine Lake. Back in December of 2022, he had given an estimated amount of 300,000. I'm sure that has gone up. And the residents of Pine Lake would like to know how much the project is currently at and if it's going to continue. I know Commissioner Dahl is going to be coming in front of you in October to either relook at that resolution or kill it because Eagle wants to know where the permit stands. So just a reminder on that. I did want to say, based on your audit, I thought Commissioner Tunisin asked some good questions. And Commissioner Hatfield, I thought that was a good idea regarding getting bids in a couple of years. Just make sure you remember to do that. That was quite an increase as far as where the, the county was paying for an audit. And then when it went from, what, 38 down to 20, or 36 down to 28, I'm sure there was probably some competition there. So anyway, and then also, 2024 is going to be an interesting election year. I'm sure you're all aware of that. I think it's time to put 2020 behind us and look forward to 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Gary White, USA. Number one, more than one way to skin a cat would be appropriate way to describe how Sheriff Lees has to deal with the Berry County government, I would say. Chairman Jackson shows his lack of wisdom in his comments on this matter in the banner. Instead of no comment, he wants the backdoor deal, making county to cut a deal. Just another black eye for the county. It has been a lack of cooperation that has caused the lawsuit against the county, it appears. Number two, on the issue of facilities, ad hoc committee, Jack, ad hoc committee. Number two, on the issue of facilities, ad hoc committee, Jackson's comment in the banner also shows who he works for, and it is clear it's not the people and their wishes. Hence, Jackson's game of eight that I dubbed the commissioners a while back. NGOs, non-government organizations, community partners, and the county, but not the people. Nowhere have I heard the commissioners give the committee authority to go look for property for a new jail. Commissioners' track records show that will only be an added tax to the taxpayers with no concern for the people. An ad hoc committee needs parameters set for it, not tell the body what to do. Later on the agenda, the commissioners will have a chance to reconsider the vote and then vote the people's will. Will that happen? Well, more than likely, it won't because you've already made up your mind. But at least you will have the opportunity to reconsider as they've been pulled off the consent agenda. That'll be it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Good morning. Joel Edson, Rockland Township. I have a correction to make. Earlier, when I gave you my plan to swap buildings with the Health Department and old COA, I had mentioned that we should drill some holes in the ceiling of the COA in order to welcome the Health Department if we did that building swap. Sharon Zabrowski corrected me on that. She said, we don't need to drill any holes in the roof. It already leaks. So, I could give you a recommendation on where to put a couple specific desks on that, which when I walked in there, apparently, they're much more pleasant. In fact, when I walked in there to give them my idea for the building swap, they offered me a cigarette. So, with that said, I really think we need to look into this entire health officer situation. The county did get an opinion from the attorney, which the commission did release to the public that stated that, yes, she does need an oath of office. This should be troubling to both sides. And I realize it's kind of cliche when you say, oh, well, this should be upsetting to the Republicans and the Democrats, both. A lot of people say that with only their own interests in mind. But when you look at the details of that during the pandemic, and by the way, I think this is important to bring up now because they're talking about shutdown measures here again in the near future, the health officer decided to shut down two out of three schools who remained open during the pandemic. The only one that she did not require to shut down happened to have the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners on it, who could have potentially done very bad things to her salary and position. If that doesn't describe double standards, in some ways nepotism, or perhaps a conflict of interest where she is putting her own job ahead of the, quote, "safety and well-being of the kids," I don't know what does. That should infuriate the people that were proponents of masks because she did not shut down one school. That should infuriate the people fighting the masks because she did shut down two schools. There should be a unified concern here from both sides on the only bureaucrat that apparently has more power than every person in this room to affect and destroy or potentially destroy the economy here in Berry County. She's taken no oath to the Constitution. Why is that? MCL 15.151 is very clear. All officers, all employees, every person in service to the state of Michigan shall take and subscribe the oath of office, I do solemnly swear. She has not.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Hello. Adam Hykla, local business owner. To echo on some of the comments previously made here, the oath of office is an important thing. You all take an oath of office. That oath is to the Constitution, right? The U.S. and the Michigan. The Michigan Constitution does state that the power is in the people. And in all the boards that I go to, it's the same thing. It's the system that you all have been taught that is incorrect. Because the system that you're being taught is not the system of a constitutional republic where you represent the people and that you understand how to get the information from the people to do the bidding of the people. The system that I've been telling you, that I was trained in, that I shut down in my community in Battle Creek, and now have been working to try to educate other people like yourselves that I hope want to be real representatives of the people, to really uphold that oath that you took. Because the system that you are following is the problem. I don't believe that all the people that are in elected positions, that are doing the work, I think it's a lot of ignorance. And don't take that as a mean stab at you. It's simply that you don't know what you're doing. I'm ignorant on a lot of things. But when people come to you and bring you evidence and truth, you have to wake up and no longer be ignorant. If you are given truth and you make a decision to continue on the same path that you were on, then you are choosing that path of evil or negativity or wrong and not choosing right. I've described to you my understanding of nonprofits and the whole system on how outside systems have infiltrated all the way down into our local communities. Unknowingly, we have on this board a chair of local nonprofit, that's an outside nonprofit, connected to all kinds of outside systems, and they're sitting right here on this board. I had no idea that I was speaking truth to that much power right in their face here, right? But I am. And it's just proof that you are either ignorant in what your actions are and what you're doing, or you have chosen the wrong path. We all have a choice in life of right or wrong, a choice of integrity and honor or one not of that. And when we are doing things in communities against the will of the people in the communities for outside forces thinking because we're smarter than them, because that's the discussions that happen at those nonprofits and those groups, I've been there. Happens on your boards, too. So, let's wake up from our ignorance, please.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. Various correspondents, does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board? Consent agenda, Commissioner Smelker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of August 22, 2023 Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes. Approval of September 5, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Approval of the attached economic impact payment budget amendment for payments issued in 2023. Approval of additional $3,963.07 for the capital replacement fund, from the capital replacement fund, to replace the furniture in the equalization office. Approval of the attached proposal from Cambridge &amp; Company for financial audit services for the years ending December 31, 2023 and 2024. Approval of the attached intergovernmental contract between Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Regional Entity and the counties of Berry, Barion, Branch, Calhoun, Cass, Kalamazoo, St. Joseph, and Van Buren for the purpose of setting forth the terms and conditions for the establishment of a substance use disorder, known as SUD, Oversight Policy Board pursuant to MCL 330.1287. And authorize the board chair to sign.
Is there support?
Support, Doster.
Motion by Smelker, support by Doster for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Colton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration, Commissioner Tunison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $6,575,340.76.
Support.
Motion by Tunison, support by Smelker for approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $6,575,340.76. Is there discussion?
Mr. Chair, $6.5 million is a lot of money. You know, I would feel more comfortable if we had a finance committee that made recommendations on such large amounts of money.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $119,965.73.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Getty. Motion by Tunison, support by Getty for approval of claims in the amount of $119,965.73. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Item C, approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $353.70.
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Tunison, support by Campbell for approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $353.70. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smelker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Item C from the consent agenda, Commissioner Tunison.
Approval of the 2023 L-4029 tax rate request for the levy of winter property taxes to be signed by the chairperson.
Is there support? You supported it? All right. Motion by Tunison, support by Getty for approval of the 2023 L-4029 tax rate request for levy of winter property taxes to be signed by the chairperson. Commissioners first? Yes, sir.
Earlier this year, you passed raises for employees, and I'm thinking this millage rate, max levy, is tied into that. There is never a consideration for how it affects the people of Berry County. It's always raise the max levy, spend the money, and then it looks like you've spent the money before you even raised the levy, but now you're going to raise the levy. Millions of dollars were spent for employees that mainly went to the top. Now, this is the levy. You could lower this levy down and give some relief to the people of Berry County. They have just as many needs as the employees of Berry County. But this is a consideration that is never brought up by the people representative, the commissioners, the county. And yes, I have voted no on budgets in the past for this very reason. So, as a trustee of the village of Nashville. So, it's not like I'm saying something and doing something different. The discussion is always the max levy. I think you can go back, and the max levy has been what the commissioners have always done, never giving any tax relief to the people. The people need just as much consideration as the county government. The county government needs to start downsizing. This is the step to downsizing. You can't keep on expanding and growing government and raising taxes on people because the people, believe it or not, I think are getting fed up with it. But they need the same relief. They need the same considerations. I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired. I don't want the county taxing me out of my home. When you tax property, you also tax the people that rent because they also have raises in that for that reason. So, reconsidering the max levy on this is what I'm requesting. Thank you.
Additional discussion?
What is a levy based on? Is what I don't even, is that just around all the properties that have been sold and raises property taxes for everybody? I mean, that's basically what a levy is, right? On the annual basis?
We'll have Michael address that. Commissioner Colton?
These rates already reflect a Headley rollback. Just wanted to make that statement.
Commissioner Smelker, do you have a comment? Michael, did you want to address that at all?
I can attempt to. Mashiachah, our equalization director is here, who is the subject expert, so. Yeah, so, I'm the L-4029, and I'll start for just a minute. There is, column four is the millage that's authorized. So, you'll notice that those are the max, well, those were what were authorized either at the date of the election, I guess effectively that is correct, they were authorized when the election was put into place, to, I don't know who made the comments about them being reduced by Headley. Each of these have been, over time, reduced by Headley and are being levied at the maximum authorized, but the maximum authorized is subject to the Headley reduction. Now, this year, we did not have a Headley reduction fraction. And if there's any questions about that in more detail, Mashiachah can. But each of these are being levied at the maximum, to Gary's point, allowed by Headley. But you'll notice that they have all been reduced, that from column four, which was the authorized amount. Who, column nine, which is the maximum allowing, has reduced by Headley. I'll step back. I don't know if Mashiachah wants to add any to that.
Sure, yes. I just want to point out that Michael did indicate that there was no Headley rollback this year, and that is correct. So, there isn't an increase in the millages being levied this year. They are the same millages as last year. There's no increase. There is actually a decrease in the debt millage that's being levied this year. So, that actually is going down, and the amount that taxpayers are paying on that levy is going to be less than last year, that millage specifically.
So, the taxpayers are getting a break?
Yes, on the debt millage, yes.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that input. Thank you.
Yes.
Additional questions from commissioners? You've had an opportunity, Gary. And so?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I just have a question for you, and that is, if my husband says, don't go shopping, but I go shopping, and I come home and I say, but, look, I got this shirt on sale. Is that like, as if I didn't spend the money? I just bought a shirt. He said, don't go, don't spend any money. And then I come home with a shirt, and because it was on sale, I spent the money. So, it looks low. It looks like they're getting a break, but did you really get a break? Because it's still going up. Am I right about that? Is it still going up? Is there something still, is the levies, are people going to be paying more because of this? Or am I misunderstanding the whole deal? Because I don't know. I'm new at this. But I don't want to let it go because I wonder if it's the same thing as buying a shirt and spending and spending money when I was not supposed to spend any money.
Go ahead. You can answer that.
All right. So, the levy amount, the actual millage rate that's applied to the taxable value is not increasing, and then the debt millage is decreasing. The taxable value, which is what the levy is actually applied to, that did have an increase this past year to the CPI. That's the same increase that everybody in the state of Michigan receives. That impacts everybody's taxable values differently, whether-- I don't know, depending on whether or not they bought a house, their taxable value could have uncafed, so their individual taxable values could have increased by more than the inflation rate. Or if the assessed value was decreased in some-- for some reason, that could have an impact on the taxable value and bring that taxable value down. So, overall, I would say everybody's taxable value increased by the inflation rate this past year, but I can't say that specifically for everybody's taxes.
Thank you.
Does that answer a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mashiah will be here afterwards if you need a more detailed explanation, either from Mashiah or Michael. So, thank you.
Yes. And we can look at everybody's individual taxable value as well. So, if you have a specific question about a specific property, we can look at that, and I can give you estimates on exactly what the amount is that you're looking at. So.
Okay. Okay. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunisen.
Aye.
Colton.
Aye. Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Commissioner Tunisen, item E from the consent agenda.
Approval of budget amendment 23A.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Tunisen, support by Colton, for approval of budget amendment 23-A. Discussion?
What was that even? What was the budget amendment? Refresh my memory.
Would have to pull that up. Michael, do you want to reiterate?
I'll be happy to. Last meeting, we had two budget amendments. The first one was relating to, and that was approved in the consent agenda, the economic impact payment budget amendment. And then amendment 23A was just a general budget amendment. It-- a comprehensive amendment incorporating actual year-to-date revenues and expenditures, along with then prospective estimates for the rest of the year. It's not uncommon that we do a budget amendment. It appeared to be a fairly large budget amendment in that $747,450 of the general fund budget amendment was related to the sale of proceeds from the sale of the former Algonquin Lake mental health facility, property. And that amendment increased both revenues and expenditures in that the revenue, again, was from the sale, the proceeds from the sale. The expenditure was a transfer then from the general fund to a construction fund specifically for the COA facility. I'd be happy to walk through the details related to the amendment if there are any specific questions. Try to answer those. Again, I-- there's-- not to--
Mr. White, was there a specific question or reason why you pulled it off consent?
Yep.
Okay.
Once again, the will of the people should be a consideration, a high consideration for these, for you as commissioners. The people of Berry County voted down the COA building millage. Two commissioners at Maple Grove have heard but will not step up and say how they're concerned about them not listening, about commissioners not listening to the will of the people. The last Maple Grove Township meeting, commissioner that was there did not even realize that you were moving $750,000 or three-quarters of a million dollars into a COA building fund. After what I just heard a minute ago, I'm beginning to wonder, do you know what you're voting on? But the biggest thing right now is, you have mandates to build for-- to build a jail. COA is not a mandate. If I need a car to get back and forth to work, I don't go out and buy a motorcycle that will only do half a job, or a boat to go out and have fun in. While I understand what the COA is, and I actually use a card of it, you still have the mandates of do the job first. If you have leftovers, then go for it. The jail has been part of a so-called need for 15, 13 years. There's no fund for that for a building fund, right? You have what you call is a, when the jail fails fund. Why are you putting three-quarters of a million dollars into a COA building fund before you get the ad hoc committee recommendations of the overall plan for the county? That becomes a problem. You're earmarking money for non-mandated, but nothing for mandated. That's the reason you need to vote this amendment down and not move it into a construction fund for the COA. Thank you.
Additional discussion? Okay. And we have discussed this on the facilities committee, and there is a jail fund being established and set up, and we'll have more details on that in the near future as we go through that. So. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smoker.
Yes.
Tunisen.
Yes.
Colton.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Doster.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators, report?
Yeah, just quickly. We will, at the next committee of the hall, will plan to have a budget workshop. We did not receive any requests for budget appeals, so there will not be any budget appeals scheduled. I'll plan to do a budget workshop with the board, walk through the budget, answer any questions that the board might have, and then ideally, the board, if there are changes, will address those. And if not, will prepare to advertise the budget for a public hearing that would occur at the end of October, our last board meeting in October.
Okay. That'll be at the next Cal?
That will be at the next Cal.
Okay.
So, there are some changes to the budget document. I've prepared a, for like, we're determined amended, that will have a new date to it. Those changes are primarily related to the budget amendment that the board just passed, so that will be incorporated now into this next document so that you have the ability to see those numbers in comparison to previous and the proposed 2024 budget. I'll put a copy in your email that highlights any of the changes that occur. And if you'd like a printed copy or a clean copy of that, let me know, but I will email everyone a copy that has highlights, and again, so that it's easy to-- for those of you that have already reviewed the budget, you can go through real quickly and see. But again, the substantive part of it is that they're associated with the budget amendment that you just passed.
Awesome. Thank you, Michael. Chairperson's report. Just a few updates. Was at Hope Township last night, and congratulations to Pam. I understand there's a plan in place for early voting. Sounds like that's coming together well, and at some point, we'll be seeing that before the county board?
You will. I plan on giving an update once I get the grant application filled out.
Okay, perfect. I like how that's going. And just a few notes from the economic development committee. The county puts over $100,000 appropriation into that fund or into economic development. But just a few notes from there from our meeting last month. The Algonquin Lake project, they will now have high-speed internet all around Algonquin Lake in that area, so that was good news. Our land bank authority is set up. We received a $220,000 grant to tear down the Baby Bliss Building in Middleville to work on future development for that property as well. That is a grant that we have to pay for upfront, so either Middleville, or they may be coming and talking to us about fronting that as they work on that. They also received a $500,000 grant to rehab homes throughout the county, so more good news. The planned unit development for the Royal Coach Project was approved. That's planned on being 130 units over time. The Mid-Villa Project was also approved, and I understand that the Hastings Planning Commission also approved 92 one-bedroom apartments out in Meadowstone. So, there are several things, and I think talking to Jennifer, she had mentioned there were something like 1,400 units planned throughout the county in the next 18 months that are either in process or happening right now. So, there's several good things happening that they've been working on successfully as far as helping alleviate the housing crisis in the county. So. But other than that, we have another economic development meeting tomorrow. Berry Township tonight, Rutland Township. We'll be having a meeting with the COA, furthering some other discussions. So, there's a lot of things going on this week, but thank you. Vice Chair's report.
Appreciate your comments on the chamber EDA. Jennifer has been, and her staff have been extraordinarily successful in bringing grant dollars into the community for the projects you mentioned, as well as some others. I think that we're getting an excellent return on our investment from them. Nothing of significance at either Joint Planning Alliance or the Joint Planning Commission. The commission at their next meeting will be looking at a building expansion for one of the existing buildings in the corridor that will be a great addition to the community. More detail on that to follow. The COA Steering Committee reviewed some draft plans, made some recommendations. We'll get a revised draft plan in front of us at the next meeting, along with some cost estimates. The most significant item was the, what we heard at our last meeting, some of the concerns raised by some of the private care providers, that those discussions with them are ongoing. Nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. I did attend Syria Township, which shares fire departments with three other entities. The village of Bellevue has backed out of this agreement, leaving a void which they're dealing with currently. I also attended Maple Grove Township meeting, Thorn Apple Manor, and DHS. We were sorry to hear that Chelsea Foster, a 10-year veteran of the, of both boards, will not be seeking reappointment this year. Chelsea has done an amazing job and will be hard to replace. Tomorrow-- tonight, I'll be attending Baltimore, and Thursday night, I'll be at Johnstown. That's what I have.
Awesome. Commissioner Tunisen?
I've got Hastings Township tonight, and I'll do Rutland tomorrow night, but just getting started, beginning of the month.
Thank you. Commissioner Smoker?
Went to Thorn Apple Township in the village of Freeport last night. We had interviews at the transit, had three interviews for the new director, Mr. Voight. Bill Voight is going to retire the first of the year.
Awesome. Commissioner Getty?
I have anything.
Commissioner Colton?
Last night, I was at the Village of Woodland and also Carlton Township. Good discussion there on election consolidation. There's a grant out there for townships to consolidate, so they're looking at consolidating the early elections with Castleton and Woodland Townships. So, instead of having three people on during this whole nine-day or whatever thing of early elections, you know, they share, so they only have to have one person on. Tonight, I'll be at Woodland Township in Nashville's Route 66, Business District, Village of Nashville on Thursday.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Doster?
I met with Bill Voight of Berry County Transit. He had conducted an investigation into the concerns that I had raised regarding transportation for the clients of the Lighthouse on the Lake. It did not appear that there was a sustained problem. The people who use that service and require rides there are already receiving priority status, I guess you would say. They are charged half the rate of the regular adult fare. That-- The monies for that are being kept track of by the Transit Authority, and then the total cost of that, of those rides, is then credited to the grant that the community, Berry County, Berry Community Foundation provides, which is $2,500 a year. And so, if they don't use all of that, it is kept in a balance and turned into the next year, is my understanding. So. So, it appeared to me that everything is being handled in a satisfactory manner.
Perfect. I appreciate your follow-up with Mr. Voight. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Gary Voight. Clearly obvious that your knowledge and what you're voting on was on display today. Millage rate, didn't have a really clue. It was never brought up. You could lower that down based on property values going way up. That was not brought up, was it? The people voting and telling you no, and then you saying, "We don't care what they do. We are the power of Berry County." The people don't matter. It's only how much money you can get and how much money you can spend. Thanks for your attention, sir. I appreciate that. It's becoming ridiculous for people to come in here. The last meeting I was at, your chairman says there's one single individual that's attacking the commissioners. To me, it's a gutless statement if you can't put a name, or you're in fear of that, correct? It's just ridiculous, and when you don't want to represent the people in what they tell you, and it happens time and time again, you don't know what you're voting on. Just because the millage rate is there, you're doing what you're told instead of leading. We actually reduced the millage rate down in Nashville. Vicksburg actually reduced the millage rate over there by half a mil. Clearly, your intention is to spend, tax, and spend some more. You need to honestly be looking at how you're going to consolidate and start reducing. There seems to be a labor shortage out there. You can't continually keep on hiring. Well, it's just a matter of dollars. We got to give more money. We can, you know. The public sector came in here, the ones that have to work and get taxed on the COA. On them too, right? On them too, right? The people say no, and you say, "We don't care." Vote after vote after vote after vote. And you wonder why government gets a bad name? It's because you don't listen to the people. I like it. We're hearing you. We hear you. I'm listening to you. I'm not going to do a damn thing about it, but we're going to hear you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I just wanted to say that I think that one of the most important parts of my job is educating anybody who has questions about the property tax process. And so I just wanted to take the time to let everybody know in the public where my office is. It's downstairs on the first floor when you walk in. That way, I just don't think that a lot of people know where it's at. If anybody does have questions, you can find me there. We do, my staff and I, we do have fieldwork that we have to do, so sometimes our door is closed, but I am available through email or phone or anything like that. So if anybody does have questions, that's one way you can contact me is in person here at Berry County in these offices or through email. And then the other thing I did want to clarify, I know we discussed it, I had a couple of presentations earlier this year, so I know that the board commissioners knows, but I just want to clarify for public comment, that the CPI this year was actually higher than 5%. And so the CPI of 7.9% was not what was applied to taxable values. So that outpaced what was actually applied. So the 5%, which I know I discussed with you guys already, but I just wanted that clarified for the public, that the increase to taxable value was 5%, not 7.9%.
Thank you, Ms. Shai.
Yes. I do have a question. That's okay.
Yeah.
I just received my agenda for the day.
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So the agenda, it's going to be another fun day in Lansing, so... So we're looking at creating, I believe, five more state holidays. I know, right? Yeah, it's a good time. So, and there are some, there's some election bills on here today, too. So I'm just pulling up my app, and I'm in Berry County, you know, so the internet's not so good, so... So health screening, they want to tie lead poisoning testing to immunization records. So there's a whole can of worms with that one as well. Expanding electronic returns for absentee voter ballots by military voters and their spouses. Previously, the spouses had to do absentee, now they want to do the electronic voting. And I am a no on that because we don't really want to expand electronic voting. We want to secure our elections, and electronic voting is not secure. I don't know, there's some water supply bills on there. Actually, I'm going, leaving here and going to caucus, and then, you know, with my staff, we'll be meeting about those bills. So yes, there's one, two. Lunar New Year, that's going to be a holiday, apparently, and a lot more of, yeah, ridiculous expense to the taxpayers. Removing certain references to challenge ballots. If someone registers same day, they're no, you'll no longer be able to challenge that ballot. Property tax assessments, if you are working at home, they want to try to tax your property because you're working from home. No, thank you. And more water supply quality installations of filtration systems and childcare centers. That just came up to me. That's a Senate bill, so I will be getting more information on that today. But everything else I mentioned, I'm a no vote, so, thank you.
It's good to see you. Thanks for coming by. We appreciate the updates, and keep fighting for us. We need you there.
I mean, I was given meetings to be here, but, you know, I'm trying to, I have to make my rounds, so I do have to go, though, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Have a good day, everybody.
Joel Ibbotson, Rutland Township again. Started the Government Accountability Forum over five years ago, and what we would do, what we aim for is in the name, it's self-explanatory. I'd recommend that everyone goes to the cities of Hastings' website and watch the live stream of last night's meeting. I've been attending local government meetings for over a decade, and last night was the very first time that I asked for an individual's resignation. I'll read you some of the texts that he sent. This is to his former daughter-in-law. "Look at you, super mom. Just say sorry to your ex-husband. Show your kids that you can be forgiving, lest call it quits. Just remember, I'm in charge of Dale Bolter's salary." I'm sure everyone in this room knows that Dale Bolter's the current police chief. "No problem. Dale and I have a meeting next Monday. Usually, we meet up a half hour before the meeting. Let's see what he says. It gets worse." "Cool. Send me some more recordings. The judge really loves recording." "Oh, did I tell you Bill Doherty and I used to live next door to each other? And he always needs entertainment, was a real stickler about the law." We're at the highest level of government in the judicial. Chief Doherty, he's chief judge for Berry County. "Dale would really understand that what you did was a mistake. All you would have to do is just say you're sorry to Jacob." Breaking and entering, I'm real good friends with Dale Bolter. The whole thing is on tape. I've got a recording of it. Dale and I are real good buddies. There are way, way more messages than just these few. Yesterday, I asked for his resignation, and he came up to me with a very pompous, snide, arrogant attitude. Not only that, if you watch the final comment that he gave, it was along the lines of, "It is such an honor to sit up here. I mean, I must be something if I'm the target of people that I don't even know," or something along those lines, I'm paraphrasing. So from what I can see, there's absolutely no remorse in being caught, just the remorse of being caught. I would encourage everyone in this room to watch that meeting, and please, apply some pressure to ask for Mr. Carey's resignation. Like I said, in over a decade of attending government meetings, I've had my fues with people. You've seen Ben and I get into tiffs when he was the chairperson. I mean, I thought those took the cake, but I never asked for him to resign. My favorite was picking up this podium and turning it around. He said I needed to address the chair, and I said I was, but I never asked for him to resign. And by the way, there are certain things I do respect about Ben. But this goes completely beyond any conversation that I've had with any government official ever, and it's happening at a very local level. And so I would encourage all of you, like I said, to watch that. You can go to the Facebook page, Government Accountability Forum, and you can see screenshots of some of the text messages. They're reprehensible, they're egregious, and I think that this just needs to be addressed by everyone that is affected by Hastings. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Additional public comment?
Hello again, Adam Higle, local business owner. Just a bit of continuation, I guess, because we're not a democracy. It's a good point was made earlier, how in a democracy, you all, as a board, become our rulers, and then we all have to fight for our team to become the next set of rulers. That's what a democracy is. It's mob rule. It's whoever has 51% of the vote for no matter what it is, is going to win. And that's how that happens. Democracies end up into fascist dictatorships because it's about the power. It's a Marxist mindset of constant power struggle. We need to fight and take that power. That's not what we are. That's not the oath that you took, that you guys took, right? So we need to understand this system that's been teaching you all, and some of you all have been involved in this a long time. Some of you are just completely stuck in a partisan mindset where that power struggle is this one team is better than the other, or my team has to win because my team is for the people, but the other team isn't. You know, it is, it's, we've all been stuck in it. We've been tricked into this. The deception is real. But again, when we are told the truth, we can either choose to be willfully ignorant and go down the wrong path and choose wrong, or when we're told the truth, we can wake up. And the truth is that we live in a constitutional republic with a democratic system for our representation. That whole democratic process is so far gone and broken and misunderstood by we, the people, that we've allowed you all to become a democracy and a dictatorship at this point, since 2020. And I don't want to beat on you guys, okay? I'm sorry I'm beating on you guys like this a little bit too hard, because I use you guys as a good example, actually, because you guys do things like you, like we should have during comments, during your votes. You guys actually participate with us, have us. Like, you do many, many great things, okay? But that's why, I mean, we still, there's still more work always for all of us. We're all on a journey of knowledge and understanding and growth, where we should be. If we're not, then we're dying, right? So take all of the words that the people are saying. We're not trying to beat you down and say that you're just bad people. That's not what it is. I'm saying these things because I want you to be the best representatives you possibly can be, but it starts within your heart, making those right decisions and acting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Additional public comment?
Larry Bass, Carlton Township. A couple of things after some of the comments that were made last week about reducing public participation in these meetings. I went back and looked at the January 2023, the first meeting we had in 2023, and there was a couple of commissions that wanted to, or seemed to be in favor of reducing the public comments to one per session. I looked at the agendas back to January of 2017, and there was two public comment sessions since then. I'm going to be talking to whoever I have to talk to to look back further and see when and if that was changed. Number two, I also looked at Eaton County, Callan County, Ione County, Clinton County. They have two public comment sessions during their, on their agenda, so that's not unique to Berry County. Second thing pertaining to the Health Board, there's four bills that are coming up. HB 4479, HB 4480, SB 299, SB 300, that will be establishing a state septic code. Now, in all fairness, we're the only state that does not have a state septic code. The concern I have with that is that will be turning, the way those bills are constructed is that will be turning control over those septic inspections back to the same people that did the septic inspections when we had toast. I'm very much opposed to that. I keep striving for separation between Berry and Eaton County and the Health Department. What I keep hearing back is that's too expensive. Well, that's nice. Nobody showed me the numbers on why it's too expensive. I would really, I'm formally requesting, I would like to see those numbers that would indicate the expense that we're going to incur in a detailed format. I will for a mile, if I have to, to get that data, to find out if it even exists. For you folks that are on the Health Board, I would also like you to talk to the Health Board at their next meeting, which I believe is Friday after, next Friday, the following Friday after this one, but, and to find out what their plans are, if and when these bills pass to enforce that septic code. Now, the good news is, they have been held up in committee since May, so, but it's happening, it's going to happen, but I think we need to be prepared for that, and I think we need to be one solo when that happens. There's no way I want to see the same people that put us through the rigors and the trials and the errors of toast be doing the inspections. That should not happen. Thank you very much for your attention. Folks, have a good day.
Thank you, Larry. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Doster?
I received an email from the administrator's office, I think everyone did, regarding the vacant committee positions coming up. I was wondering if we should mention those. I don't have those in front of me exactly, because there was quite a number of those that didn't have a single candidate, if I recall, that's applied so far, and I'm thinking that we need to make a little more effort in trying to find good candidates for these positions.
Good point. Commissioner Colton. Commissioner Getty. Commissioner Smoker. Commissioner Tunison.
A couple of things. What Larry Bass just talked about, that it has been proposed that possibly if it went back to the state, that they would do an inspection on everyone's home, even without a sale, every five years. Now, that's going too far. You have a perfectly working septic system. There's no need for anybody to come out and inspect your system as long as it's working fine until you sell the house. Second point I want to talk about is our commitment to the COA. You know, at the beginning of the year, when we went up to the Commission on Aging Board and said the county was going to commit $3 million to a new building, it was sold that we wouldn't have to do a millage on the public, that we would try to fundraise the money to build the rest of the building, which wouldn't put a tax burden on the citizens. And that's what this is all about. But our commitment to the COA, we need to get the COA out of the way first, and then we can tackle the jail. We get the COA out of the way, which is a very vital part of our community, and we're committed to the senior citizens of this community. So I think we get that out of the way, then we can tackle the jail. So I'd like to read a little thing from Courtney, is any that we've received regarding the COA and regarding all the other facilities that are in Berry County, and there needs to be a better collaboration between everybody. But regarding how their process goes, the goal is to keep the senior citizens in their home for as long as they can. However, when the need arises and they need more assistance, this is how the referral system works. They have a brochure available that has a list of all adult care and assisted living facilities. They will also suggest you reach out to Care Patrol, which is a placement agency. That will go over the next steps and options. You may also call them, and they will send you an email with all the options. The COA has historically never participated in direct referrals because each individual needs are different. So I just wanted to, you know, give her a moment here because she reached out to us about this, so, other than that, I'm good.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
First, thank you, Commissioner Tunison, for your comments. I agree with you totally on the COA. I'm a very strong believer that utmost in our responsibility is to take care of our older citizens because they have taken care of us for so long. Secondly, of public interest, I hope, we did have a very successful Vet Fest in Dalton on Saturday. We raised $1,600 towards our roof project that's going on out there for the Veterans' Post 422, which, yes, a little special interest there. I am the commander out there. Also, I'd like to mention Johnstown Township. This Saturday, the 16th, from 10 to 2 o'clock, they'll be having their first-ever craft show and farmer's market. So it's a big deal for us out in Johnstown Township to be doing this. I have a number here and some flyers to hand out. If you're interested after the meeting, please get one from me. If not, stop by there, check out the baked goods, craft show, and produce. There's going to be lots of good turnout there, and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hatfield.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one comment, couple of comments. Had the privilege to attend the GOP Lincoln Day Dinner on Saturday. It was very well-attended, very well-run, great speakers, very well-put-together, so my appreciation to all the people that were involved in that event and making it happen. Outstanding, just really well- Commissioner Doster had mentioned it, but there are some open board positions. Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Berry County Conservation Easement Board, Commission on Aging, Community Corrections, Department of Health and Human Services, Parks and Rec, Solid Waste Oversight. The comments have been made before that on some of our committees, Southern Berry County people with Dalton addresses are disproportionately represented on some of those boards, so kudos to us for representing and promoting down there. So take that as a challenge, my fellow commissioners, to promote that at your committee meetings and go out there, because I will be giving this to the folks in my townships as well so they know, and we'll be recruiting people for those positions as well. So hopefully, you will do the same, and we can get some good candidates in those positions to work on, so. But thank you all for coming today. We are adjourned.